Hello, hello, hello. You want to go ahead and get started?
Yep.
Alright. Good evening, everybody. I am so glad to see everybody. You know, when we do these things, we never know how many people are going to show up. I don't know if you all are familiar with the show Parks Recreation? And they will have public input meetings, you might see two people in the audience from staff. So I am blessed with these surprises and thrilled that we have good representation and room of the senior citizens who contribute. Because after all, the purpose is primarily for you. And there's a community center piece of this also. And the survey actually speaks for sets of needs. The first thing I want to do is acknowledge our elected officials. We have Commissioner Marley, Mayor Prochey, Craig, Mayor Bell Flowers, Commissioner Mayor Kramer, and Commissioner Layton. Commissioner Skarole did not appear to see me, I don't know if she will stream live, but I think she's going to be watching. But we do have a forum with all of our elected officials. Also want to acknowledge all of the staff that's here. When I've done facilities in the past, it's always important to have staff here because you can build the most beautiful building in the world, and I discussed this with one of the individuals, staff. And actually one of the, the president of Cumberland County Community for Aging. And, you know, we discussed the fact that no matter how beautiful and state-of-the-art the building is, without the programming, you know, proper programming, you're going to have a difficult one. And I've seen that in the past, I've seen another place I worked had a beautiful senior center, but it's not programmed right. You might have activities from eight to two, after two o'clock is, you know, it's a dead zone. Nobody's in there until it's tomorrow. So, programming is always important. And so, I'm glad to have my staff involved in programming. Megan Moranis is here, she actually was instrumental in helping us with the survey together. We gave her and Megan office questions, we said, you know, can you make this available? If everybody wants to be there, we'll be able to, so thank you for that. We have a beautiful administrative assistant, that's the first face you see when you walk in here. And welcome everybody. Brandon Williams, he's sitting in the back there. See how much he's loved? You love Mr. Brandon. Yeah, Deandre Wilkins, he is our operations supervisor. Many of you all know him, he's been working with the pickleball group. And then, of course, we have our clerk, identity clerk over here. So, I want to thank everybody for coming out, and I want to thank my staff for their support and coming out to give that input. Because that input is equally as important as seniors and the users of this future community center. Introduce the elected officials and staff, also want to introduce the architect of engineering firm, CHA. They've been heavily involved, not only with the community and senior center, but also did the schematics and the concepts for the sports complex. And I just want to let you all know, that's actually part of the site plan. So along with the community center, we also wanted to include this sports complex. Because sometime in the future, I am going to go to the board to ask them, to ask them to update, or to approve the updated master plan. We have adjusted the master plan and to move forward with construction documents. The proper procedure is to adopt the master plan, which would be essentially the roadmap for future development. And different phases, there will be several phases for this project because naturally we don't have the money to do everything. So, we'll be doing, for the next ten years, we'll probably be doing some form of fashion implementation of this plan. The first project being the pickleball and tennis courts. You all will recall that particular project is funded. So we have funding for construction documents, for construction documents and also reconstruction. So, with that, I am going to turn over the mic to Mayor Bell Flowers to offer his opening comments, and then follow by the time manager. Okay. Thanks, Lamarcus. Good evening, everyone who's come in tonight. For our first kickoff community forum of a community senior citizen center, their proposal to put on the top floor. Tonight's meeting is important for all of us because you have the opportunity to have input, discussion, comments, recommendations. And to what this senior citizen community center is going to look like, not only for today, but for the future, and here's the point. And to do that, we need the input. The architect that's here tonight, who is out there, based on the input we've received, we're marking in. And that's the needs of our community. And that's why this meeting is important tonight. It's not a one-and-done, it's to kick off a new forum. We'll have another one scheduled in October. We're going to continue to gather comments, those folks are up here tonight. And those folks are viewing us live stream virtually. So have the opportunity to gather and continue to gather comments. We will finally come to a final proposal, plan, whatever we're talking about. So in the fact finding and the fact gathering, what does this center look like? What programs do we want on the end? And how is it one of the needs of our entire community? And that's where we are with this, with this proposal that we have tonight. So, each person that's here will be allowed to render comments, because that's what this community forum is about. So, before we get going, anything else, any more members want to make any comments? Commissioner Skarole is not with us tonight, but she is giving us live stream. I would like to also say that our security department representative, Princess Jackson, has an appointment tonight. She already has been scheduled, but she will be doing as well, she's just not around the person. And she's very grateful and supportive of what we're doing. And that's why I'm here. I represent Princess Jackson. Lamarcus? Thank you, Mayor. And now we both have additional remarks from the town manager, Chancellor Lawson.
Hello, everyone, this is Chancellor Lawson, the town manager of the town of Mills. I definitely want to take this time to thank you guys for coming out. Because our most valuable asset in the town is our city. And so, it's impossible for us to do something of this magnitude without the general public's feedback. Definitely want to acknowledge our mayor and board for having the vision to push this project forward. I want to acknowledge our staff, all the hard work that they do, representatives of CHA. But the reason we're here tonight is to engage you, to give the feedback you need, to ensure that what your needs are, are being addressed properly. So like the mayor said, this is not a one-and-done. At the end of this process, we want the entire town to be able to know, we had a series of public opportunities for you to be heard, we had a series of public engagements, so that when we get to the end of the road, we know what we feel is an asset to the town. So, thank you for you guys for coming on this evening. I'm excited, we had a big turnout for these events, I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Before I get into the survey, because I want to share the survey, you all have copies, but I want to, I want to share with you all my takeaways, and you all might have some things you might want to add that, based on what you're saying. But I want to emphasize why this step is important. This step is important because, from my experience, a show-ready project is going to yield you funding. State level, it can be traditional, funding through the bank, it can be bond. And so, while we are, while we are moving into the construction documents phase of this project commitment, and the construction documents phase is funded. We do that because, you all have seen that, if you have construction documents ready for a contract to bid, it's real attractive for grant funding, it's attractive for funding from federal and state level. And then, also the opportunity for a bond referendum, if the town's sending votes to support one of them. So, that's why, that's why moving into construction documents and getting a clear direction on what we want this center to be. Concrete plans, it actually shows our elected officials that we have skinning game, that we're ready to go. It also shows that it's definitely a need in the community, and it's a doubtless a need. We, you know, you all have been there, see how we operate this program. And how we not operate everything that we could operate, because we just don't have the resources. And that's even with the facilities in Fayetteville. And I want to let you all know that I have visited facilities in Fayetteville. Visited facilities, I've lived at peak times, I've also went by, but here again, because of the nature of the senior centers, there's no way. So, I did do so in my due diligence, and actually went around and visited, and then talked to some people about the program. I talked to some people, we just had a meeting recently with the director of Cumberland County Council for Aging. Did I say that right, Chancellor? So we met her on Friday, and she shares an insight with us, because she also does some programming out of both senior centers for you. So I just wanted to share that with you all before I get into the survey. And please, please forgive me for that, but we are challenged. Technically, I don't know how to work the remote control, so I'm going to forward my slides when I turn back to you, and address you while we look at the survey. I would have hoped we had more respondents on the survey, but seeing as how we didn't, I happened to ask to also provide a link for additional, additional, that's not how the word was. My nose on it. But we will, we will have a link up, not too long after this meeting, for additional input. So it's going to be to all of you. So, as far as the survey, we were asked to open the survey for fourteen days, we did. So, the survey opened up on July twenty-second, and it closed at midnight on August the fifth. Now, in addition to the survey ban online QR codes, etc., we also printed out a hundred copies, for hard copies, we printed out hard copies here, and passed them out to get additional input from citizens. That we were going to actually take that data and insert the data in the digital, so we can provide you all with information, so. Well, we'll take a look at Commissioner, I know with the survey being closed, I don't know how we go back and access that. We did, well, we did get some good response, we did get a hundred and seventeen total responses of the survey. And out of the hundred and seventeen respondents, the majority have lived in the Cumberland County Hope Mills area for a long time, at least ten years. At least ten years, but the majority have lived in the Cumberland County Hope Mills area for over twenty plus years. So, they're familiar with the area, they're familiar with the needs and the extent of growth, and what the, and what the, and what the needs are. So, what I take from this, this slide, and also the next one, is that over eighty-six out of the hundred and sixteen respondents have lived in Hope Mills for eighteen years. Now, even though we didn't get the responses that we wanted, we do know that eighty-four of the respondents actually live in Hope Mills area. So, you all are familiar with area code, the two-eight-three-four-eight area code is Hope Mills. So eighty-four out of the hundred and seventeen live in Hope Mills area. So we do have good representation of seniors, citizens in Hope Mills area. Fourteen out of the hundred and seventeen live in the Red Springs, St. Pauls area. And that makes sense based on the data that we see in city rec, of people that register for our programs. We get a lot of people from the Red Springs, St. Pauls, what's the other one? Parks, thank you. Parks, and that's, that's the two-eight-three-seven-one-ten people. So, that makes sense, because we do have a lot of people, if we look at registration, we do have a lot of people coming from these bordering towns in our coastal waters. Age and gender of the household. Majority of our users are women. And that makes sense, because you know, when I'm walking around looking at senior programs, I see a lot of ladies. They come in and do the zumba, the live dance, classes, etc. Some guys too, but a lot, a lot of ladies. So fifty-five-plus seniors, thirty-seven, thirty-seven percent are, I'm sorry. Thirty-seven percent are seniors, actually. So, a lot of, a lot of respondents were seniors, most of the respondents are seniors. And then, thirty-four percent, which is the second highest demographic, are in that eighteen to fifty-five. And we see a lot of cross-program, and we see a lot of younger generation of people actually participating in some of the group fitness classes. A lot of member folk are beginning to play football. So, depending on who adds, that's a good thing, some people pick the bad. So, as you say, it's our people who want it, and with eighteen to twenty-some-year-olds, get their own, play their own type. But it's also that demographic that wants to bring in the younger, and can teach them the basics of the game, so. Here's the one I was just talking about. Gender-wise, fifty-nine, fifty-five percent of the users will have the architectural team, come with concepts, and give feedback on the concepts, gratitude, and so. So one of the things, one of the calls, we can walk back, you know, we know that an element of walking track is bigger. So, you'll see in his plan, he's going to show you all, you'll see that element of walking track. So, that is what we're hoping, that we hit those targets, we need, and we want.
I've talked to a lot of seniors, and they said that they did not see the survey that came out. There's a lot of them online, and they don't come out here, they could have had. I've had a lot of them talk to me, they've been, "What you showing me, what I've seen here, I think all are just a little passive job." The only thing they might have is a senior center. As a matter of fact, those seniors, we want to unglow them, about what that really is. And the right hand, the right pole inside, we're going to go walking there. Because a lot of things that they said they might have, but what they know, you're going to be able to see it. They're all looking at it, they're looking at it, they're saying, "They're probably the seniors, they're not the others." And not the other seniors, they don't have to be seen, they're surrounded. Because I was on the same page, because they're just not in their role.
Let me just mention, well, as far as the community center, I'm going to refer that back to you all. I think they're one of those that the community center committees, so I'd like you all to be deliberate on that. That's what we want to explore. We're taking matters.
I just want to say that I do agree with this headwork, even though I'm not in that category of being a senior yet. I can definitely see down the road, I'm coming up on my fiftieth birthday, so I'm definitely thinking ahead. And I've worked with the seniors for over twenty years with my business, so I'm very aware of like the things that are important to them. The activities that are set up in these retirement homes, old retirement homes, group homes. I was in the making of senior center last week, so I got a chance to see how it was getting set up. And it is, it is super, super nice. When I heard that we did have one, it's just, just for them. I mean, it is kind of a little devastating, because I know that myself, even being a fifty-year-old, like, I don't want to go to places that they was just very scary, you know, hanging out and giving them activities. Because a lot of times, we don't have the same things defined, as far as how we're making our god, our garden. I do hope that we can set up something for them. And I'm here to say that I volunteer to help them, and if you think that you need.
Thank you. We just take a rest, and we'll come back in. That's specifically where the October seventeenth, we don't want to take all the feedback we give to you all, we want to come back with what we heard, and maybe some of those things, based on the current environment.
I also agree with this headwork. I think that seniors need, most of all, a lot of low-impact activities. Because when we get older, you don't have the ability, the endurance, or the strength to have it when you're younger. I mean, look at me, I'm sitting here in the swimmer. So I'm kind of making example of what can happen if people think it's too strenuous, the activity. I think we have to look at the health and the safety of the seniors, I think that's very important as well. And if you have too much stuff in there, who's saying they're not going to get off something they shouldn't be on? And so, pickleball, basketball, those kind of things are something I, in my opinion, seniors can do. Maybe fifty-five can, but wouldn't be a little bit over, I don't think. I'm not discriminating here, anything. It depends on, it depends on the person. I'm sorry, I apologize. It depends on the person and what they're able to do, okay? Some may be able to jump up there and shoot hoops, I can't, but a lot of people may be able to. Doesn't, I think the things that we need to look at, when we look at all of these things that's going to go into the facility, and splash cam, I'm not sure that's going to work here. But that's, that's big, that's a lot of water everywhere, and I'm not sure that can do. It won't work too well, but like I said, indoor, like the little side swimming pool or the walking track, events that, that people, and I'm just hoping that the board can come together as one, and help us make all these decisions that needs to be made, and do it in a fair way for the whole entire community.
Thank you. You take one more comment.
A lot of questions are probably asked. I've been in Hope Mills for nine years, but I've noticed, I'm eighty-one years old, got a heart that I could drop dead right now, thank God, and orange. I'm very active in veterans groups, but the only trouble is, most of them weren't even born when I retired. I sit at home a lot, because I have no damn place to go. It'd be cool just to have a place where you can sit there and squat lives. I mean, I think I saw when the ARP was doing it in senior city, they were busy here in a catwalk interview. So, you know, it's just, you're talking all this stuff, and to me, you're daylight and a dollar short, because I don't know if I'll live that day anymore.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I'm so glad this meeting is happening. I am a senior, I'm sixty-three and a half years old. But you know what, we all have different hobbies, and we have different needs. But the one thing that we do need, we're a community family, we all need each other. So whether we're painting, or whether we're pickleballing, we are a family. And so we have, I'm a pickleballer, and so is my grandson's. We have an eleven-year-old, and we have a ninety-six-year-old pickleball player. So we all, so there's something for everyone, but we just have to make it, we have to agree to disagree, and we can have a room for you, and we need communication to socialize with one another. Because I had this really dear man have said, "We have worked all of our lives. We work longer than we are going to retire." So we have told, we've always been in a routine, haven't we? So, we need to learn how to work out of our full-time jobs. And this means supporting one another. And sir, you are more than welcome to come hang out with us, we will talk to you a lot. Will we not? Yes.
Thanks, everybody, for your feedback. So now, keeping up, keeping the program moving, I'm going to hand the mic over to Tim, and then I'll advance this last one.
Thank you, Lamarcus. Just a little bit about our background, my company is eighteen hundred people. We have it very unique in the engineering, architecture world, in that we have a group of thirty people that all we do is sports fields, sports architecture, and aquatics. And so, Lamarcus started this, we had done the baseball fields to start with. We got it all done, and we said, "Wait a second, we need a senior center." I said, "Well, we can do that too." He said, "All right, because we might even have aquatics that are in, we can do that too." "We might need a partner, well, we can do that too." So we went through, and we started working through the whole process. So, the other part that's kind of interesting, a lot of companies our size have a planning department, that all they use is their big chair rooms, and they never actually design it, they don't need to construct it. Same people that do the planning on this are going to need to have construction documents. So our master plans are a lot more legitimate construction plans. Because we looked at solar orientation of the fields, we looked at that building blocking those game pickleball courts that make so much noise, and everyone complains about, even though they do. But we tried to put the pickleball court behind the building, so that people would directly across the street from that bureau. So there was a lot of thought process in where we did it. Also, Lamarcus gave us four or five different locations for the pickleball courts, and we chose the spot that had the most ability to make it a nice flat, graded area, and not have it, and have it be visible from the senior center as well. So the whole parking lot, everything works very well together. So that's the first part of it. It was amazing how these guys came to us with a list of what they wanted inside the building. There's Meals on Wheels, there's veterans places that are going to be in the quiet part of the building, away from where the gym is, there's a, there's a raised track. Our, our cost estimate, everything you guys say you want, we can, it just takes hours. There's, there's nothing that we can't design to build. It's just a matter of, and we like the fact that the things that you guys want the most are the most expensive things. So it means it's going to, it's going to make our building more expensive and frigging, and more fun. So we have, you know, the therapeutics, we just did a therapeutics for Austin College, for the baseball softball facility, and it's, when I said, I thought it was going to be a big hot tub, it's the size of that little, you know, that partition of the building, that's how big the therapeutics are. There's like eight to ten guys can be in there, or women can be in it at the same time, it's pretty incredible. So, we'll go to the next slide. Basically, all, what we're doing here is showing you a legend where everything is. And this is where we talked about, here's the Meals on Wheels, here's an indoor practice facility, indoor swimming pool, it's a, it's a program area for future commute, the, the place for the gym, the place for the veterans and the disabled folks over here, and basically have their own parking lot with their own handicapped spaces to make, this is a flatter area. So that's the quieter part, and then there's different meeting rooms that can be partitioned off one way or the other. So there's a lot of different, you got to make it almost like utility, like you got to be able to, one room has to be able to do four or five things. There's also a working kitchen with Meals on Wheels that you guys had asked for, and a place to do, if someone wanted to do teaching, we have a teaching kitchen as well. This is just the floor plan of the building, it's tough to see. You can see in here, we snuck three pickleball courts inside the basketball court. That's a regular forty-six by ninety-four basketball court. And it'll have a, the last thing, the last slide is the boring one, that the only one that Lamarcus cares about is the cost estimate. And it has the price of the walking track above. It's a little expensive, but it's something that you guys want, and it's kind of a neat, it is a throwback to the old, to the old gyms that we played basketball in when we were in high school. And we'd go to the old high schools in the, in the, I grew up in upstate New York, in that area, and we had. And we had, there was a couple of gyms in Troy and Long Island that had, had those old gyms up there. And you wanna talk about a lot of people staying over the weekends, uh, watching basketball games, because it wasn't really having stands there. So it's a, it, it can be used as both a walking path and as a spectator spot. We're just trying to show kind of the way the building is gonna, the way it, it masses. As a civil engineer, I'm always saying how it masses, because I'm, I'm not an architect and I'm not maybe not to talk, to talk about the building. But we're trying to make it, we have a lot of programming, a lot of stuff inside the building. So we're trying to make the building as economical as possible. So the gymnasium has a, doesn't have brick cladding everywhere, it's gonna have some metal, um, siding on it, it'd have metal roof. And then the, the bricks would try to match the rest of the, whatever the, the way the town is set up to that. The next slide is gonna be a couple of renderings just to see it from different angles. So, that's looking from the, obviously on this side of the pickleball courts. Something that, um, was, that we talked about, Marco had, had requested, this is the kind of thought that these guys are doing. Make sure the parking goes this way so people aren't zooming across the, taking people out, so you're, you're, you're short circuiting the parking. That is not the most efficient parking, but it is the safest parking. And there's no gay parking spaces like they're going to publics, uh, supermarket that are a payed and that just only go one way and one way out. This allows for a, somebody who's a little bit older, who gets, who, uh, getting out of parking space makes it really easy for them to get in and out of there. That's part of the problem. Here is the, here's the drop-off for meals on wheels. You could also, you can also make this your drop-off if your kids go in if there was a, a non-senior vet going on and they were using the gym there. This is just a little bit closer up looking at the building, seeing how the different materials are acting. A, a lot of glass, so you can see, it's kind of an inviting building, you can actually see into the building in the front. You can, you can tell when somebody's on the front of the, walking down the front path and is lost which way they wanna go in. You can, uh, the, there's a side entrance, there's a few entrances in the front, there's a nice festival in the front area. And then this is the last one, which we had worked on, baseball field, wanna make sure that we can see what it's gonna look like. There is a developer that's gonna be building that road going down the middle. Um, and we basically tried to just show the whole building that way. Um, kind of a neat feature, a lot like this building here. We have this in being all, uh, brick. You could put, you could put windows up there, have some good sunlight visibility into there. The only thing that this doesn't have on it, and it's because we don't let our mechanical engineers get involved yet, is the, the ugly, uh, air conditioning units will probably be placed on top of that, whatever it's, it's probably. And this is very difficult to read, but this is, this is the full programming pricing. So, the, the bare bone scope is around, I think it says eight point eight million. When you get down to it, when you put the running track in there and you put the other items in there, I think we're up at twenty, just a little bit more than twenty-two million. Now, because we do all this in-house, we have pretty darn good numbers. I can tell you in the last five years, the price of things have skyrocketed to a point where someone gives me a number and I tell them, there's no way that's the right number. And then I go and I ask two more people in the, in, you know, in the concrete industry, concrete was fifty-five dollars a cubic yard, it's now two hundred. So things of that nature are, so we're very, we don't wanna come here and go, here's your building, it's all done, it's twenty-two million dollars. And then it goes out the bid and it comes in at forty. And you don't, you, you can't get the building. That's why you have to claim small, at the eight million, and then work your way up to have advocates and achieve it, the whole thing, so that it gives the thing off and enough, for not being told one thing and then it just disappears.
I know this is hard to read and you all, uh, we are gonna publish the, um, plans and reviews, and what we will develop on it. And also the cost test. Um, the second thing I wanna say is, um, any building, they, they're, they're, so, I would say first question. Okay. So, um, we are, we are gonna publish this, um, sooner or later, all, all the plans and the cost tests. This morning likely will be phased, I will tell you, going in, and we were asked by many medical hours. Um, initially, we look at the senior center, um, minus the aquatics. But the aquatics actually drives the price up, you know, you're looking at filtration, you're looking at, um, MVP, counterpoint, et cetera. That drives up the cost of the building. So, that will more than likely be a phase, if we, when we do decide that's something we wanna do, that will be another phase unless we come up with, with the market for the aquatics. So, I just wanna throw that in, aquatic, aquatics is an expensive amenity. It's expensive amenity, so I, I, I did wanna let you all know that. Um, this is hard to read, but, um, sometime this week or maybe early part next week, it will be available on, um, the caution I would give you, this is conceptual, there will be some, I won't say value engineer, engineers will not use that word. I'll say some value management. There will, every part, there's always value management, when you go back in, you count your penny and say, you know, maybe this quarter is gonna be smaller, et cetera. So we'll come up with a number that, um, grant folk, you know, folks to make a decision about the funding, something that we can swallow and say, you know, it's expensive, we can afford this and move on. All of these things. And then it will be designed in a way that we can always come back and, and add later. I will tell you, there, there is a presence, um, of what we're trying to do. And you might not know this, Tim, yet, but I found out last week and actually talked to you. So Fuquay Arena has a similar scenario. They had an old golf course that was dedicated to the town, but they turned it to, uh, they have a senior center that's under construction right now. Same issues that we have, there's, there's, there was a group that just wanted a senior center. And then there was also a group that says, hey, we need additional things for families, et cetera. So, um, and their initial cost is gonna be about, I want to say it's twelve million dollars, but I think their price grew to like more than thirty. And, um, and their city council gonna ask where the money came from. Wait, county's a lot richer than we are, but, but they actually approved the full amount. So, um, they're a month away from having that facility complete. And, you know, staff and elected here, we've been invited to go up and take a look at it. So, um, and there's a lot larger ones, there's something like forty-four thousand square feet. They actually have, they actually have a racket golf course. And we're not doing all of that, but there is an example, there is an example of the senior center on the golf course that's right in the streets from us. So we intend on going up and taking a look and, and, and do some takeaways on what we might be able to provide. So with that, I'll let you all, um, bombard, tell your questions.
I don't need to ask a question about the others.
Okay.
Uh, my question is, same confusion, everyone is all confused with who.
Mm-hmm.
Or is there a question for the golfers? And the staff, maybe, because I'll be in front of the players or whoever.
The, the way we have it right now, we have, um, one entrance on the side. We have a, a secondary entrance in front of the, this, the, the disabled vets and the veteran section, and then we have the main entrance. And there are three entrances, and then there would be a meals for wheels, which would be employees' own. But there's nothing around the back of the building. What we were trying to do was make this be the front of the building, be the, where the activity's gonna be taking place. And that way you'd keep an eye on if there's any knuckleheads or shenanigans going on in the unfavorable quarters, too, or not happening. I was twelve years.
Come up here. And that's the question. If you did a work to do, you could run out of this for a special reason. Why be sure like we're talking about, first, the team, we have a ton of stuff going on. But, um, you know, I did do a job with you, and you got your.
That's something to consider. I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing, Ms. There, um, there, there, okay. I'm getting this, um, yes, and, and we, there's been some talk about, you know, once, once, just like in sports, right? When you do the sports complex, some functions are gonna move to golf course, and then other functions with soccer court, those are gonna be shifted here. So, with a new building, there will be some programming, there are gonna be some things, the buildings are gonna be more suited for, you know, big shift. So there is opportunity, another tip, there is opportunity that this has to be more of your, um, pass, like, pass to, you know, a party, a cafe, et cetera. So that's, that's a programming, you know, the building is beautiful, but the programming is, is, is gonna be up the staff and how to even adjust to this thing, because we have a new system.
That, when you're talking about building things, okay, so you're basically, these are the big buildings, okay, but you're talking, all right? And then you walk around the complex, there will have to be blocks.
Yeah.
Okay, if you're handy, that may be a good idea.
It'll be helpful, you know, very.
Right, you know, okay. And then also, you're not wanting to separate the buildings. It's just like, someone sitting back there, you know, there's somebody might be sitting there that I know, but I might just sit down. Okay, if he's out here and I'm out here, then I'm not gonna do that. And I, I wouldn't want it quiet.
Well, and that was, and that was.
Children anymore, guys.
This is, this, this part of it, you, you can see, this is called the, the, the darker, or the more orange is considered the active zone. And then this area is considered the more quiet zone. And we can make the wall sticker, you can do, you can do soundproofing so you don't hear the screeching of the children as well. I mean, that's the reason, one of the things that we pushed the, uh, the veterans and the disabled folks on that, in that one corner. So this, we're considering this to be the quietest part of the gym, or excuse me, of the facility. And you're also, your entrance into the gym is here, it's not here. So you're not gonna, you don't have the noise to, the, the noises to come here and come all the way around and get to you. So we're, we're kinda using the building to our advantage.
Well, yeah, I was invited today to build, first, building up for our, for our, I need to play for, right? You have to say, what is what you want, right?
Yeah.
That it was definitely seniors, no preparation in there, it was connected, energy room, except for maybe there were other people in it. But it was, it was hybrid, and so, people were sitting up playing golf.
Yeah, I mean, this, this, this is the reason we do, you could actually do the same thing here.
Huge exercise room. I mean, it was a indoor, uh, it's a big exercise room. And I felt then, I felt, when we start talking about senior thing, I think that's what most of us want. Is something like that, that we can communicate with each other, somebody not really bored with each other. We got a lot of, we have our models, that, that anyway, like we all sit down and learn the basics, course. You know, we want big tape, we want chairs that'll come, or sit down, I'm not talking about sitting up. So we want something comfortable. Maybe a TV in my life for those who want to watch.
Yeah.
Some sports, I don't want that. I'm not, but there are people doing it. But there's something, I think, that y'all would kind of, really a way for us to push us over here. And I really do not want to hear that. I love the young ones, I think, I don't care what, you know, I'm not that many guys, which I'm just, I don't have a child, I don't have a wife, okay? That I don't care, because it's good, it's a good for me, that I don't want to do it.
And I, I can tell you, we've done four or five senior centers this is the last five years, and no, no two of them are the same, they're not cookie cutter. So if there's things like that, it's, one of the things that was driving the basketball court was you could fit three pickleball courts on it, you can have the break, you can have the, the track above it. So if Marco comes back and says, ditch the basketball court, I'm not gonna go, oh, that's horrible. I'm gonna say, okay, what are we gonna do with that? What does that area become programmed to and what do we do? And how do we make it? So there is, you can have, you can have a, a gym floor where you do yoga and do your other things on there and whatever you wanna do, there's no basketball courts. Or there, or there are rollout ones that come out once every two weeks on Sunday, and that's it. You know, you, it, it doesn't have to be a basketball court. There's nothing set for stuff.
I have a question, um, I, I heard there was some talk about splitting up the time, like the seniors have it in the morning and the, the youth have it in the afternoon. Um, and I'm not gonna hit that age thing again, but, you know, some people are morning people, some people are afternoon people, and some people are evening people. I don't know how they come up with, I, I guess, I, I was told they cut off kind of two o'clock in the afternoon for the seniors, and that would be it. And then the youth would come in and take over. So, uh, that's kind of like, I don't know how you all get up in that figure, or if that's something that's gonna happen.
So, we haven't really gotten to the program. I wanna tell you, based on my observations, uh, most of the senior quarters I've seen in this building is, um, between, between the eight and, uh, two P M. time. Now, we haven't said that yet, but, you know, um, I used to work for the city of Durham, and Durham had a senior center. And they, I think at the time, this was in the early two thousands, they spent like eighteen million dollars, that was a lot of money back then, um, for the senior center. And, um, it took a lot of heat for that because after two P M., that building was essentially empty. Ended up laying off county staff and they got raped all over the code because between the hours of, let's say, seven to two, the building was being used. But because the youth fell off after two P M., they ended up laying off staff and the building's stacked. I don't know if it's the same way now, but, um, the building was run by the county and they took, they took a lot of heat because they built a senior facility that was essentially, you know, being used up to two o'clock, two P M. And then wasn't used throughout the, I don't know if that was a program thing or what it was. So, uh, so that, that was an example, that was an example that I gave, because I, I, I do remember that, because I was, I was thankful that it was one of the projects that, to, to city of Durham, that was a, a Durham kind of, a Durham kind of.
When we talk about the different age groups of seniors, okay, you have a, say, the fifty-five, the sixty-five, and the fifty-seven, and a lot of them have retired and have to go back to work because of the economy. And they're not born to a senior in seven to two. I mean, there's so many variations in age, but then I will, with some seniors that might be out in the marines, I don't know if I should bring that, but whatever, but it's, it's a lot of seniors that. And we can find more and more older seniors that are more active than we used to. So, I still feel that we don't, we don't.
Everything, everything is done in town?
Yes. There are tech engineers, little man, mechanical engineers, plumbing engineers, cost estimators, they're not even gonna be building it. We don't actually build a building.
We don't actually build a building.
We're not coming.
Yes, one person at the line, that's me, when I did it, two months ago.
So what I was wondering was, whenever you spoke about still being close down, there was some people attending. I was wondering, what kind of activities were they providing for these people to come and participate in?
I was on the outside looking in back then, I was proud to remember, but, you know, we kind of kept tabs on what Durham County was doing. Um, from my recollection, it was a combination of things. Now, the program that they had, and, and I don't want to sound negative, but it's, it's a lot of what I heard, you know, it really wasn't even heavy programming as far as the classes. It was more of a place to socialize, meet up. Um, they also, I, I do remember mills, uh, Mills on Wheels, um, was there because we would have to come across my office parking lot, trying to get to the senior centers so they could, you know, get their free meal, if it wasn't delivered. So it was more, it was more service-based than, um, programming, let's just say. From, from what, from what, mortgage services, health services, um, you know, um, a lot of things that the common county, um, um, I'm sorry. The common county, um, council on aging, a lot of stuff they provide, you know, how care care is itself. That's what I remember. I don't remember, and I think specifically county didn't offer the classes because that was something that the city agreed with, that the city of Durham did. So, city of Durham concentrated on actually programming, act stuff, um, R C class for the seniors, and the senior centers more community service, but, hell, you know, meetup space into that picture. So that, that might have been the issue with programming, but, you know, back then, the county and city were separated. Durham parts of the creation, and the county had their own, their, their, their own, it wasn't heavily.
No, it, it can be moved anywhere. It, it was, it was centrally located from a cost perspective. If it's deemed, it needs to be off by itself, or it, it, you could actually, you could actually make it so there were concrete walls that are blocking it, and the entrance was from a different access, and they had two different accesses. It's, it's not as efficient as it, as it could be, but it could definitely be done if it's something that you, you absolutely don't adhere to that stupid basketball bouncing, well, yeah, you can grow it.
Oh. So what I'm hearing, sounds like a place for leaders, because in time that, for, um, maybe, for, for leaders, is what I'm hearing is for, for leaders. But that, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, but what I'm thinking completely is, there was more for leaders, than, uh, what they have to manage.
Oh, I, I'll chime in, um. Uh, this, I'll chime in now, this is changing the block number to Tom Andrew. I do think that, um, one of the most important aspects of this will be program. Uh, like Marco said, we have two different organizations that are directly tied to seniors, that we are talking to, one of which is on the agenda for, uh, August nineteenth, forty. Where they're talking about a significant amount of programs. So aside from the architectural design of it, what are the programs we're gonna bring? The programs like this, and this, and programs that are, uh, that actually educate people on how to be careful with the things that they make. But we have to make sure, you know, we're siding with the blueprint we have right in front of us. We have a seventeen million dollar facility on this campus, that we figured out a way architecturally to put the entire police and the entire fire department in one building. And it's architecturally designed in a way where if you're on the fireside, I've been here for nine years, it's been up about two, I stand on the right here from the fireside to the police side. I'm, I'm being honest. So there are ways architecturally that we can make this work, but we have to make sure we understand, we have a large veterans population, we have a large disabled veterans population. We have a desire to actually, uh, focus on special needs, but seniors has to be well. And so I do think that architecturally we can pull this off, and we can ensure that the program that we bring to this through, because if you attended the senior expo, that was the Mid Carolina Council on Aging, they have fifty members. Just specifically geared to seniors. If we partner with them to bring programs, I think that's the win, that we actually have seniors separated in a different location, but you're bringing some very high value programs that they can participate in. While we're actually trying to cultivate needs of other individuals. I just wanted to add. Any other questions?
Most of my questions that are open, I'm concerned anyway. The one question that I want to bring that's very current, does this also double as an emergency shelter? We just had storms and we had to evacuate, so this will also have another function?
Yes.
I, I would quite agree. Um, I probably should consider it is a level four facility, that's why that, that is, this couple is, in her game, this will also be a level four facility as well. So we just have an opportunity to give a level four shelter at.
Thank you more for all of your input. Um, now I'm gonna turn it over to my board and mayor and the closing comments and answer your questions.
Thanks for that question, Baron, because you're exactly right, this is gonna serve many different purposes. And it's that shelter that also have an opportunity to secure additional grant funding. Because when you're looking at a building this size, and looking at the functions that it's gonna perform, it's not gonna be cheap. It's gonna cost a lot. Uh, before I ask some questions myself, I wanted, Tim, can you go back to the original drawing? And I wanted you to look at, uh, detail of what those rooms are.
Okay.
I know we talked about the basketball court.
Yep.
But I wanted to also go back over, put a diagram like that.
This one here.
Yes.
It's tough to see.
What are in these rooms?
This is a, this is a veteran's room, this is a disabled veteran's room. I'm trying to remember, I just looked at it yesterday. Uh, this is a, a, uh, what's it saying? You can't, it's, it's.
I'm getting that age too, I'm gonna have to. And they'll be back in a little while.
I knew there was gonna be a problem, we made, we made a, I love my seventeen. I'm sorry. We were trying to keep them, we were trying to keep them in the quiet spot of the, of the, of the, of the, uh. And again, all these, all these rooms, all these rooms can be moved around, there's, there's nothing that, there's nothing set in stone on it.
I can see several curtain walls, I mean, so, so apart, apart the program, I can't see it, but apart the program that we asked Tim and his architecture group to come back with, and, and. So along with senior programs, we also want some original questions. So you have, you have rooms that could, um, that partition could also open up to the conference rooms?
Yeah, this one here, this one here could be broken up into two different rooms.
So that's your education, but then also computer lab, just all kinds of services, because like you said, you know, all seniors don't want to play, um, don't want to play football. And some might want to know how to use an Apple device or a computer app, so they'll be classed with a computer lab, things like that. So all of these rooms have a function, I can't see it right now, but everything that, that Chaz and I asked them to come back with as a first staff, they've come back with rooms.
This over here is the working, the working kitchen, and then the two, uh, areas, or the two areas where the, um, the, the teaching kitchen, if you wanted to have the cooking class, um.
Where are you putting the safety net?
All this, all this down here is all, is all, could be all seniors. There's only one what? No, there's, there's, there's a, a Mills on Wheels kitchen, and then there's a teaching kitchen, so there's dual kitchens in there. There's a what? Yes, well, or, or whoever wants to be programmed, we don't, I, we don't program it, we just, we just, we just do, yeah. Oh, heck yes, yeah, yeah. This, this, this one is a partition wall that can come out. These are basically, these are all rooms that are very much had walls like we have in here. And it's just basically, we're trying to keep them to a certain sized room, so they're gonna be, you know, an area where you could, you could, you could comfortably have twenty-five, thirty people in there sitting around tables. No, no, these are, these are all, these are all real curtain walls, those are real, huh? Yeah, so, and, and that's the other thing we did, we were conscious that we didn't want to have one big open space, so it didn't sound like you were walking around in the airport. We want to make sure you, you keep it as quiet as possible.
I think the seniors letters, the letters put a lot of everyone.
That's fine.
Tim, um, is this, uh, proposal the twenty-two million as we see it here?
Uh, it has, yes, it has the aspects of the twenty-two million in it, yeah.
Okay.
What you have to do is.
And what's the total square foot of this footprint?
I wanna say it was twenty-four thousand square feet, is that right? What was it, was it twenty, was it twenty-four thousand? Uh, we'd have to go, if we go, I think it, yeah, it, it had therapeutic fuel on there. The price tag of the pool is here.
So, so, so your, 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 this number here, it starts in, your base bit, your base number.
Um, I wanna say that's one fifteen, eighteen thousand square feet, that was the basement of the building, that was the basement of the building.
It's when, it's when you start adding aquatic pools and. Oh, I'm sorry. So your, your, your base beer price, um, the fifteen thousand, the eighteen thousand square feet is a twenty million dollar price. And that's, that's roughly three hundred dollars a square for a commercial, that, that, that's what commercial construction is going on. But the aquatic, the aquatics and the, um, the, the fitness, the fitness, um, the track, the, the track, the elementary track, the pool, and then the, um, there's also a, a turf area. That's only twenty-four million, and now, now you're roughly at twenty-two, twenty-four thousand square feet, um, with the aquatic, with the aquatics facility, the chemical filtration center. So the aquatic, the aquatics, um, um, humidity does stand significantly to that stuff. Alright, any comments or questions from the fellow board members before we close it up?
You know, we know, we're building our baby bill, that we always have to end up paying a much higher price in the morning. And then your retired bill around, and, and some things are a lot under control. Uh, material prices, uh, even concrete changes prices.
Yep.
And it's gonna be very easy for these people to slide on up in price. The main thing that I've heard, even from this pain, was all these people being here, and nervous, or certainly. So, I think before we, we start to build buildings, we'll make sure that we got all of our residents accounted for. And, and included in the price of any, any extensive figures. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Hey, I was here when we built this place, I was here when we built that building next door. Now I'm here when they built the old park station, the library, and the police station. Now I'm here when they built a new lab, a new police fire station. Mr. Kramer set one part of that with me, and, uh, I'm still sitting there because I like to make sure that everything get done, get done the right way. Get done within budget, as close as possible. And we all know that's not gonna happen. So if they say this is gonna be twenty-two million, I'm sorry, Sarah, it's gonna be more, more than that, I'm like, we're all know that, and I like to be able to, this sort of makes it the way it is. But anyway, it was good seeing these many people come out for the first meeting, and I'm sure that if you talk to the neighbors, we'll have more people come out for the next meeting, and then I'll do more conferences. Thank you.
I knew we were talking about, all of us agree that Bill Chris Bill is a perfect senior citizen, do we not agree with that? Let me read something to you. The city and county, both Cumberland County Parks and Recreation, held a ribbon pledge ceremony on Tuesday morning for the eight point three million dollar senior citizens named for the late city councilman Bill Chris. That center was built for eight point three million, and it has, um, it has a therapy pool. And as a senior citizen at seventy-seven years old, don't ask me to get up and go to the seniors, the, to a exercise or whatever, between seven and two during the day. I'm an afternoon midnight person, that's why I don't go to the Y M C A, because I can go over there at night. So not all of us, senior citizens, go out in the morning.
Can I ask you a question? What is the square footage of that building?
Um, I thank you all for coming out and, um, sharing your comments. I don't think what I would have to say is very popular, so I'll probably just say it. I think we're a grown community that has needs, that, that we have several age groups that have needs, and I think that we're probably gonna have to come up with a compromise for this building, that's my honest opinion. Um, but that's not that I have it, we do thank you, we do thank you for your comments and for participating in tonight's forum and participating in the survey. Because I do, I am not saying, but I do aspire to this thing one day, and my parents are saying this, um, so anyway.
So, I'll thank you everybody for coming out, and I appreciate the fun times I've had with this. And this is just a concept, it's, it's a great idea, it's a concept, you know, it's an idea to be there. And we're gonna make everybody happy, and we're gonna come together, but, so basically, what, what I put, I had a question for Alan. So, in the design process of this building and everything, everybody wants a separate use for the seniors. So if they, just like Jim said, if they can design that building where they could block out the, the walls, and basically build a building within a building for the private entrance, or seniors, where nobody else can get in, no kids can get around, you basically put walls in the building, and you make a building within the building. You know, that'd be something that everybody could build, and that'd be something that people would, is that kind of type of something to need? And then, you know, if y'all wanted to use the other facilities within that building, you know, certainly can, but you would have your own space, your own portion of the building. But that can easily be designed into the building, but we're just gonna do it on basis, this is all conceptual, um, the architects, they can bring us back something with that, with that in. Um, I do agree that, um, you know, we're trying to do a local building, anytime you spend, like I spent a twenty-two million dollars, it has to function for more than one purpose, and, um. And, um, so we need, we need youth programs. We're on a space here that best connect the scene. We get so many phone calls and complaints all the time. Um, so we're, we're, we're trying to help the folks, but would that be something that the, the audience here would be willing to be entertained if we could design something?
All right, folks. I think all of you are coming. This is the first kickoff meeting. We're going to have several more, and there's going to be more surveys. I will tell you that I was at the Bill Chris Center when it was open. And Mr. Craver and I were having ribbon codes for the one in Washington, and both of them in the city of face. And both of those centers, both of them do, yes, have aquatics, if they have a beautiful pool. Neither one of them have pickleball indoor courts. Neither one of them has an indoor track. One size doesn't fit all. And I think that's where our common denominator. This building that we're in now was built in the eighties when Oakdale's population was much less than ours today. We're close to eighteen thousand residents. And within the next two to three years, we're going to probably increase by five thousand more residents that will relocate, move to Oakdale's community, to work, raise your families, and enjoy their life. They've chosen our community just like all of us in this world. This is our community. And it's a testament to my, with the responses that I've put. One of the goals of this board coming in was to look at the community senior citizen center. It is a proposal. I have seen, in my time in the military, I have seen some senior centers and community centers put together with an atrium between. Where there are a certain, a certain part of the building that is reserved for senior citizen activities and programs. The other part of the building is a multipurpose room for all age groups. Because not everyone is a senior. There are other age groups. We have totally in this community outgrown this building in all ages. I hear constantly, and so does the board, we hear more and more recreation activities. Over this past summer, we probably had some of the most important recreational activities in our community. Not only here in this, this building, but at the formal golf course on that track. If you go there tonight, you're going to find soccer nets. You're going to find young kids out there with soccer. When this building was built, there was no sport called pickleball. Pickleball is an emerging sport that's come out in the last few years. It's a very popular sport too.
I think they're, I think they're going to.
They're going, they're going to disagree with it.
No, it, I, I, this just happened yesterday. Yesterday was National Pickleball Day. It was invented in nineteen sixty-four, and it was, and it was named after the guy's little poodle who was chasing after beautiful balls. I never knew, and I, I've been designing it for ten years. I didn't know that.
I didn't know it either, and, and I looked, you know, the past years, and I say, was there any, was there any interest in pickleball here in Oakdale?
Oakdale is a hard place for pickleballers to come in. And it's a downbeat game. You can play a buck, a dollar, and two dollars, two dollars. And I've been playing with two, two dollars, two dollars. How many, I think he's got, he's a good boy. But I've been playing, and it's a hard game.
But we never had a dedicated pickleball court.
No, we just play on tennis courts.
They play on tennis, we just adapt.
We've always had courts with the D O P, with the sports.